All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February 5th Selectmen's Meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask you to stand and ask Mr. Clark to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes of January 22nd.
Second.
Motion made in second, any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. At this time, we offer the opportunity for citizens to bring before us any new business, that's items that are not on the agenda, which I wish the Selectmen to be aware of. Is there any new business this evening? Mr. Rasch, please join us.
Bill Bradstreet, Tom Eadymaugh, Precinct One, one of the older gentlemen that was invited to the Senior Center. I was disappointed to go there yesterday, find the door locked, said something about a water problem. Can or will it be fixed so that it doesn't happen again? It's awful to be turned away at the door. There was a woman there who was trying to struggle for her car to get in. I was able to tell her to get back in the car because it wasn't open, but it's a...
It has been fixed.
Will it be fixed so that it doesn't happen again?
We happen to have an audience member tonight who might be able to drive it. We have some ongoing issues at the Senior Center.
And because you like to do it to me, you look very sharp tonight, sir.
Well, thank you, Bill.
Ms. Lane, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. We had the problem with the sprinkler that's in the attic of the Senior Center. It's an unheated attic space at Senior Center. This is the second time that it's happened since I've worked here in Danvers. We thought we had it corrected, had professionals look at it. We're going to look at that again and make sure there's no air getting in to get one of the lines frozen. So we're taking all action we can to make sure it doesn't happen again.
I do want to say that I did see on Facebook a notice by DPW that it was closed, so at least we're trying to reach out.
Yeah.
And thank you for that.
Do the best we can.
Is there any other new business to bring before the Selectmen this evening? Seeing none, move to the agenda. Agenda item number three, the Board will vote to accept a gift from Care Dimensions in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 53A. Mr. Tom Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Care Dimensions, which is just down the street, a corporate neighbor of Town Hall, reached out to us about a month ago. They were making some improvements to their office space and they had some projectors and some screens and some IT cabinets that they were going to be getting rid of, and they thought of us first. And they called and our IT director went down and inspected the equipment and consulted with the schools and found that it would be useful, equipment they have in reserve to deploy in town and school buildings. So Leaf Rockner from the Buildings Division went down and picked up the equipment, which we have, and subject to acceptance tonight, we'll send a letter to Care Dimensions thanking them for their generosity.
Thank you. Any comments from the Board? Entertained a motion?
So move that we accept the gift?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Wonder if they have any overhead projectors in case Bill needs to make another presentation?
We'll take about it.
That's a carousel slide projector. All right. The Board will consider appointment by the Committee for Human Rights and Inclusion. Oh, did I? Okay. The Board will vote to accept a gift from Friends of Endicott Park in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 53A. Mr. Tom Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second gift tonight is a memorial bench in memory of, and I want to pronounce this correctly, Bill McEnieses.
Yep.
I confirmed that before the meeting. Treasurer with Friends of Endicott, active with the Scouts and a number of other groups in town. McKenzie's are here tonight from the group. They've indicated that as long as I didn't screw this up, they wouldn't necessarily want us standing up and speak, but it's a very generous gift of a bench to overlook the Good Now Pond at the park.
Any comments by the members?
The benches cost $2,000? Oh, I thought they were $5,000. Give it up to you guys to find a deal.
I'm having a row, Bill, and I'm very happy to see the application. Thank you very much. Entertained a motion?
I move we accept the gift as presented.
Second.
Made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the kind donation. All right, now, the Board will consider an appointment to the Committee for Human Rights and Inclusion and welcome a candidate to the Recreation Committee. Mr. Tom Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You received two talent pool forms with your materials tonight. The first is for William Graham, who was active with the Lions Art Event that we had a couple of meetings ago and was at the Martin Luther King Jr. Event as well, and has expressed an interest in joining the Human Rights and Inclusion Committee. So he's here, that's a board-appointed committee, and we can take that first. And the second item is really an introduction and a hello. Jeff Klickstein expressed an interest in filling a vacancy on the Recreation Committee. He has met with David Mountain. David feels he would be an excellent candidate on that committee. So both gentlemen are here tonight, and I would defer to you in terms of introductions.
Thank you. I'd like to address the application for the Committee for Human Rights and Inclusion. Any comments on that position? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have come to know Bill Graham quite a bit in the last year and a half, and he is a dynamo as far as his generosity and interest in improving the life of people around him. He collaborated with the people at our school department in that poster contest in which our students participated with 350,000 other young people throughout the world, and he went at it with, I was so, so impressed. I think he'd be a great addition to the committee, and I would move his appointment.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Second.
Motion in seconded. Are there any other comments on the application?
I just want to say through David, I met Bill a couple of years ago now, and I've had coffee with him quite often, and I really respect his judgment, and I think he's a great guy, and I'm very happy to see him volunteer for this committee.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None, thank you. Thank you very much for your volunteerism.
And then, Mr. Kristen, obviously a Lyndle Hill neighbor, and did you want to introduce him?
He's been active for many, many years with Danvers Sports, and he knows the town well, and I think he's eager to serve on the committee, and as I mentioned, I believe David is eager to have him on the committee, so...
This is not a vote of the Board.
No.
But I want to thank you. Any comments on the Board?
Thank you for your willingness, sir.
Jeff, thanks for volunteering, for the years of volunteering, and now for this volunteering for this avenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm glad to see you coming aboard as a volunteer for the town.
Thanks. All right, that being done, a public hearing will now be held on the following petition by Danvers Elementary Division dated January 11th as presented to lay and maintain underground conduits on Green Street and to locate poles, wires, and cables on Green Street as well. Who would like to speak to that? Ms. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can start, and we have our town engineer, Stephen King, here also that will help. This request is due to the long-awaited sewer, I mean, water booster station, which we'll be installing at the intersection of West Street and Green Street. This was approved by Town Meeting, I think, two years ago to serve, we have a low-pressure area, everything between Green Street and Route 114 up there, that high hill, has been known as a low-water pressure area for a long time. We've, this town engineer has now designed a water booster station, so we'll serve that area as its own little closed loop with higher pressure, just so we have another high areas of town. And the petition before you tonight is for us to be able to serve the new station with electricity. We need to put a pole in an underground conduit to the station. We've looked at where it goes, right there on the corner, so it does not adversely affect anyone's home or their property, but we need to put it in the right-of-way. So it's for our own DPW use.
Is this, so we're talking, so this is the lay of the maintain the underground and the poles?
Correct.
Okay, so both of the, both of the...
The pole and the conduit.
...items in your agenda. Is there any discussion from the Board, Mr. Clark?
David, I got a question. Is that going to, that's affectionately known as Brewley's Corner in Danvers. I don't know if you realize that or not.
I have not heard that.
It's even on the maps, many of the maps, that Roger Brewley was a kind of a country person who lived there in a rather rough condition for many, many years, but he was an avid fisherman, very knowledgeable about the Ipswich River, et cetera. His house was right there, that intersection, but that right-of-way went over to what was called Log Bridge, which is connected to Middleton. I'm wondering, you're not blocking that right-of-way totally, are you, for potential future access?
No, we're not blocking the right-of-way. We're keeping it off to the side.
Because 20 years ago, when I was teaching civics in Danvers High, we had a moron article that we wanted to put a, replace the bridge there for pedestrians, but the technical high school was over there then.
Right.
Which it isn't now, but I still think it's a fantastic access, and we shouldn't give up, so that if in fact we wanted to have a rail trail over that or something like that for off-road vehicles or whatever.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Very interesting, because hopefully that won't be a dumping ground now for trash like it has been the last 30 years since the bridge closed down.
It has been a maintenance issue for us.
Huh?
It has been a maintenance issue for us.
Yes, well...
Mr. Mills?
No comment. Sounds like it makes sense. On this?
No, that's fine.
So to piggyback on Bill's history, when I was in high school, would go to the drive-in theater over that bridge, right?
I did too.
And I came over that bridge after one night and got a flat tie on West Street, and there were no homes there at that time.
It was the last dirt road in Danvers, West Street.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this application? Entertained a motion?
Actually, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the audience who'd like to speak to this?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made in second, close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll entertain a motion on the agenda item number six.
Move it as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Agenda item number seven, a public hearing will be held on the following petition by Comcast to construct a line of telecommunications under the public way or ways herein specified in four East Coast Road and four Newbury Street. Welcome.
Good evening, Steve King, town engineer, here representing and along with Comcast as far as the petition to install underground conduit for telecommunications for two properties abutting Newbury Street, Route 1, and four East Coast Road, and four Newbury Street in Danvers. They're going to be basically installing 130 linear feet of underground four PVC conduit within off the right-of-way for the state highway and then onto our public way on what's called East Coast Road, where they'll then cross the street and then service four Newbury Street. So they'll be servicing two properties once they're completed. The work's not scheduled to start until April 15th after our moratorium's done for the year.
All right. Questions by the Board?
What's the moratorium?
A moratorium is we don't allow anybody to excavate in our streets because of winter time, between November 15th and April 15th.
All right. Mr. Mills, what's that with you? Any questions, sir? Diane?
No, thank you.
All set.
And Mr. Clark?
Is that behind Wood Electric Substation up there? These parcels?
This is right by going through the landfill that...
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got the wrong place. Okay, yeah, 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 okay.
All right.
Okay, okay, I see, okay.
All set, Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I'm all set, yeah, yeah.
All right. I have no questions. This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak on this application? Seeing none?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Entertained a motion?
I move that we accept the application as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. All right. Agenda item number eight, the Board is receipt of an application from North Shore Running Series TR Ramsdale for a four-mile road race on Sunday, March 17th, 9:00 a.m., beginning and ending at the Danvers High School Tennis Court parking lot, proceeds to benefit the family of Phil Callahan. Mr. Ramsdale, welcome.
Good evening. My name's TR Ramsdale. I've been here a few times.
And describe the race, and this is your time for some free airtime, so...
Yeah, I'd love to be a ham. It's a four-mile race that takes place in the neighborhoods surrounding the Danvers High School area. One of our runners in our Wednesday group recently passed away at the age of 44, leaving behind a wife and two young children, and everybody needs help. So I kind of had in the back of my mind this St. Patrick's Day race for a few years now, and it kind of became a priority lately to try to do something for his family, so we're hoping that guys will approve it, and we'll have a big day.
Thank you. Any questions, Diane?
You do a wonderful job always, so thank you.
I appreciate that.
Diane?
No questions, thank you.
No?
I got a question about the impact of a state highway for this event. Did you have to contact the state as well as the town for the potentially blocking off Route 62 at this point?
We're not blocking Route 62, we're not crossing Route 62 at all.
No, you're using it, looks like you're on the map. Poplar Street from where you cut down 202 over to Burley Farm Road is Route 62.
Right, it'll be sidewalk only.
Oh, sidewalk, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's for that distance up to Belgium.
Okay, I just, I know in the past, I've had parades we've had to have down that street, and so we have to go to the state as well as town.
When they come down the Burley Farm Road, they'll take a quick right onto Poplar, but it'll be on the sidewalk for a couple hundred guys and then onto Belgium.
Okay, all right, all right. I didn't know, because that's kind of a busy intersection right there at that bridge, and I wouldn't want to see the traffic impeded by it for any event.
And as a reminder, I should have mentioned earlier, that Clark has informed me that we have all the signatures in review by the appropriate personnel, including the Police Department. Mr. Mills, any questions, sir?
Just, I applaud this wonderful project.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, I'll, yeah, Diane?
That's okay. How do you intend to keep the folks on the sidewalk and not jumping off the curb?
I have an officer stationed at that corner, as well as two volunteers along that route.
Okay, so they'll be watching for, okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion on the application?
I move that we accept the application as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
As always. All right, the Board is receipt of an application from Danvers Indoor Sports, 150 Andover Street, Markmas's manager for One Day Wine and malt beverage license on Saturday, March 16th, so you can go and have some drinks the next day run. 6:30 to 10:30 for Bat Mitza at that location. Sir?
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Board. If it hasn't made, I apologize, it's my understanding that my partner, Markmas's, added my name to the agenda. My name is Kelly Craig, I'm the managing member at Danvers Indoor Sports, and he couldn't make it, he was tied up at a board meeting in Popsilva. So here, yep, sorry.
Describe the event.
Answer any questions, concerns regarding the Bat Mitza that we're hosting March 16th.
Describe the event and how the alcohol will be managed.
Well, we have, we've hired a licensed Boston Best bartending.
Bartending, yeah?
Yep, and they'll be, and they'll be, yep, tip-certified and doing the selling and distribution of the, from a bar.
I assume this is a private event?
It is, yeah. Anybody familiar with the layout, they'll be, they'll be taking over what we consider building side two, and we'll be closing that off for the event.
Thank you. Any questions by the members? Selectman Langlos?
No, I think it's great you were in front of us a couple months ago and had an event, and I think it's a nice thing, a pretty nice place to have these functions, so really appreciate that you're opening it up for these people, always looking for a place to have their events.
Thank you very much. We work hard to be a part of the community, so...
Sure, and it's smart to hire the professional bartenders, keeps you out of trouble, so that's a good idea.
Yeah, it does. We'll also, we also have on staff a, somebody, one of our employees is tip-certified, so they'll be actually stationed at the event as well.
That's great. Good luck.
Thank you. Selectman Langlos?
All set?
Selectman Mills?
No, just to always note that I knew Peter and Anna, who were marked grandparents.
Oh, yeah.
And so I'm connected with the family for nearly 70 years, and I have the greatest respect for everything these youngsters have accomplished.
Yeah, they're a hard-working family, yeah, yeah. But thank you, I'll pass that on.
I have no questions, I want to wish you luck in your event.
I move that we accept the application as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with your event.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Clean the room.
Yeah, I guess so.
I don't know for this one. Can you get that in?
All right. At this time, the Board will discuss the Town Manager's Contract Extension. As you know, the Town Manager's five-year contract is coming up for renewal. The Subcommittee, Diane Langlos and I, met and discussed with the Town Manager some of his thoughts and ideas, feedback, although the Board had given him feedback just a couple months ago in his performance evaluation, which is separate and distinct from this. This is another five-year extension. We talked about the conditions of the job when he, when he took the job and the contract that we agreed upon then, and the opportunity to make some refinements and then some adjustments. The Town Manager suggested some, the Subcommittee suggested some. We came to some, we came to an agreement on what we would present to the entire Board. At last meeting, we had an executive session to go over with the entire Board conditions that we felt were appropriate for the new language of the, of the contract, and there were a couple of minor modifications the Town Manager has agreed to from the entire Board meeting, and at this time, we are going to discuss formally extending, modifying and extending the Town Manager's contract for another five years. There was a, so at this time, the major modifications or the modifications in the language, there was a lot of terminology to, the first was to align the contract with the start of the fiscal year. It was felt that it would be beneficial, given that our fiscal year runs July 1st through June 30th, to align the contract with the fiscal year, and seemed appropriate. We have talked about the termination and severance pay subsection, in which we landed on, I'm trying to find, my notes are old notes. Here we go. That's the earned, trying to find that section of the contract section, three? The Town Manager, can you remind me what, finally, nine months? So...
What, six, we went to nine?
Right. Previously, we had negotiated, and if the Town Manager is to be let go without cause, that is, the Board, whichever Board it were, were to decide that the Town Manager was to be let go, previously, we had six months of severance pay, and we've extended it to nine months of a severance pay. Based on the condition, job condition of the role, the fact that it's, you just can't go to Indeed and find another Town Manager position, it's a rare role, and the process that we went through to when Wayne Markey retired took us multiple months, and so the we felt it was inappropriate, that if we are going to release the Town Manager without condition, we'd go from six to nine months. There was a section five which discussed some language from the MMA's model contract to clarify what happens if a non-renewal, about the non-renewal notice. There was also some base salary language reflected in the MMA's 2018 model contract. Basically, if the Town Manager works past his expiration of his contract, he continues on with, under the current contract's language. Section six was benefits, and the new language was just a clarifying language that you can continue at during severance of Cobra for a period of 18 months. Section six had a material change, which was like the rest of the Town, the Town Manager, we're combining his time off. There's no more separate vacation days, holidays, and sick personal days, they're all combined into a single pool of days. The number of days remains the same, it's just combine them all together, and the only material change is he'll be prorated, and we will allow 120 carryover. So he has a maximum of 120 days carryover. We also talked about his retirement allowance. We've increased it from 6.5% to 8% of his base pay. He may contribute a higher amount of his own salary towards his retirement. There was a language change on which professional development organization he belongs to. He's going from the, he's going to the American Society of Public Administrators, away from the Government Finance Offices Association. Both professional associations, the one he wants to go to is more aligned to Town Management and the direction we're taking. We had other hours of work, and basically, this is old language that was striking altogether, the exempt status, he's an exempt employee, so he's paid for the outcomes, not for the hours worked. We don't measure him by a 40-hour week, we measure him by the outcome that he produces. And then there's a bonding and indemnification language change, minor, and it safeguards the Town Manager from lawsuits that may arise from him performing his duty on our behalf. With that, he presented us with an amended contract. The members have all received it, and at this time, I'll open it up to discussion. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. Thank you, Gardner and Diane, for working with the Town Manager to discuss the contract modification, and thank you, Steve, for your input with that group and coming together. I know 10 different items to look at, but I think it all worked out very well, and I think we should be happy that we have you in the fold for the next five years, is it? Good, thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say that this really is a show of confidence from our Board to you, Steve. It was probably the most important single decision that I've made in the 13 years that I've been on a Board. When we hired you, I think we all were very pleased with the interview process that you went through, and I've been more pleased with your performance than you've been here. And I, people ask us quite often, I like the new Town Manager. And the comment I have to make now is, he's no longer the new Town Manager, he's been here a while, a while, and I can't believe he's been here almost five years. Time does fly fast, but I think you've had a great grounding, you had big shoes to fill, and you did a very good job filling them, and therefore, and more, and I think we're headed in the right direction. You've learned to work with the constraints we have in Massachusetts, with these ridiculous laws like Proposition 2 and 1/2 and other things that you didn't deal with in Connecticut or where else you might have worked before, but I'm very pleased with this contract, I think it's fair. You've got the professional status with this that I think you've earned, and I look forward to working with you at least as long as I'm on the Board, and maybe after I'm off the Board, still lending my ear, my voice of reason and experience. Congratulations, Steve, I think it's very fair.
Thank you. Selectman Mills?
I think the document that has resulted is exactly right. I think that Gardner and Diane have done an enormous amount of work. That stuff is hard, pulling all that thing, and you explained it very well, Mr. Chairman, and I think the Town is extremely fortunate to have Steve, and don't you dare leave.
Selectman Langlos?
Well, I am really glad. Is that a Michigan glass still? Did we, after five years, still have to look at the Michigan glass?
Julianne's teacher asked her on Friday if she was rooting for the Patriots, and she said she roots for the Detroit Tigers, so...
Yeah, well, so...
She's well-trained.
We'll have to teach her that these parades, when she gets old enough, she'll switch. I, of course, have had great, great rapport with you. I think working with you has been a pleasure. You're intelligent, the staff around you is intelligent, those that are new and old, and they seem to all blend well together, and the Town is moving forward in a different direction, in a different way, but still in a good direction. And it's, you know, we have more computer, more technology, but that's how everything's moving. I actually have to hire people now to help me work. So, I do have to tell you, though, when I went to meet with Gardner, that I told Phyllis and Roger, Mom and the stepdad, that what I... She goes, "What are you gonna do?" And I said, "I gotta talk about hiring the new town manager back." And Phyllis told me that I better hire him again for five years. So, I took my orders well, and we're really happy that you are staying. The residents of Danvers are too. Bill's right, they ask. They're asking less now, and the comments now are, "He's doing a good job." So, thank you for agreeing to stay with us.
Thank you. So, I enjoyed going through the process. I was glad I'm chairman when this happened. And like Bill, I feel this was the hardest decision, the one that kept me up most nights, is how to fill the shoes of a town manager who's been with us over three decades. Since that decision, and every day since, I haven't regretted an instant of that decision. I've been extremely happy with the way things have been going. My priorities count the top writers, and sometimes they get pushed to the back burner, and that's understandable. I've appreciated that the first contract was, what do we do? First time we've had to deal with this in 30-something years, and obviously, you're coming in based on a contract by a long experienced town manager in the town. So, there was some allowances and some conditions and some starting points, and this is the natural evolution of that. I think the five years have gone very, very well. You face some pretty good challenges, you've put yourself out there on some issues and taken some lumps. You've instituted and implemented a lot of new personnel, and I'm pleased that it's not change for change's sake, but change that is considered, each time the change has to happen. And do we... Is there an opportunity for refinement and restructure that makes more sense for the Danvers of the future? So, I appreciate that you've made measured changes as things have presented themselves to you, and thankful for the team you've assembled, and look forward to the next five years and seeing where we go. So, I'm very happy with the modifications, I'm very happy to ask you to stay another five years. That being said, I'd like to give you an opportunity. What's your thoughts or opinions?
Well, it is hard to believe that... It's been, you know, four and a half years at this point. I was at the MLK event a couple of weeks ago, and somebody asked how long I'd been with the town, and I had Juliana with me, and she's sort of like a mile marker for me because she was one when we moved here, and she's now, you know, four, five years old, getting ready to start kindergarten next year. So, it's gone quickly, and I've enjoyed every minute of it, and I would thank this board for having the faith to hire me and for their continued support. I think this is a fair contract, and I'm looking forward to signing it and moving forward and continuing with the projects and the efforts that we have underway. Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the contract extension as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, our duties include the next agenda item, which is reporting to the board on various items of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start by noting that next Monday, I will be attending David's Senior Supper at Men's Club at the Senior Center. Larry Crowley invited me to speak, and I've accepted his invitation, so I've been pressing him for what kinds of topics they'd like to hear about, and he's played coy. So, I'm just gonna go and say a couple of words, and then open it up for questions and see what the crowd would like to talk about.
Just be used.
And I'm told the food is quite good, David, so I'm looking forward to that.
Of course, you're invited.
You did receive, with your materials on Friday, a copy of the FY '18 audit. We will have the auditors here. We're still finalizing it. It may be the first meeting in March. There may be a conflict on the 19th, but since we had the audits, we wanted to get them to you now, give you extra time to review them and come up with good questions. We'll get it, we'll have it on the website, so folks will be able to find it. But we will have a presentation from our audit firm, either the 19th or the 5th of March, to walk through some of the highlights. It is a clean audit, which is really kind of our main concern each year. And so, start preparing your questions, and we'll address them then. Just a quick update, I forwarded to you a press release. The town was awarded a third grant from the state to continue looking at our water system and the future of our water system. Our most recent grant was a $75,000 grant to develop some resiliency modeling during droughts and to get some professional guidance on system efficiencies in terms of when to use wells, when to shut off wells, to maximize what we're permitted to do within the existing permit and regulation constraints that we face. So, that's gonna be very helpful for us in terms of essentially auditing our system and making sure that we're using it as efficiently as we can and maximizing our allotments within it. Related, I'll just report, the town engineer and I had a very productive meeting a couple of weeks ago with members of the Danvers Alarm List to continue our conversations with them about the potential for a municipal well site at the back of their property, and also, we've resuscitated the conversation with them about a conservation restriction on the property. The current deed does have restriction language in it, the deed is fairly cloudy, so we're trying to work to see if there's something... I think everybody's interests align in terms of wanting to see that property preserved. So, we've had a couple of productive meetings, and we'll continue to meet through the spring with that group. Just looking ahead a little bit, we have March 9th is flagged, that's a Saturday for our budget workshop, work on the budget. We're getting close to having a balanced budget ahead of our March 1st deadline to present to the board, and we have the Saturday, the 9th marked off for the full-day workshop. And between now and February 19th, we will circulate some potential warrant review dates to this board. We'll also be reaching out to the Finance Committee to just get their dates scheduled so that by the time we meet on the 19th, hopefully, we'll be able to announce the full set of dates for Board and FinCom review of the budget and the warrant.
On that note, I'd like to ask, as I do annually, that you present the board... If you could send the board a spreadsheet version of the proposed budget, I use that for my analysis, but also, I think one of the... Some of the lessons we've learned in the past is, if we can get that even in draft form, with the knowledge it may change several days beforehand on our website, so that people who come can come and review it ahead of time and prepare thoughtful questions, not just that day. I realize that it changes and shifts all the way up until the day before, maybe even that morning, but even if you get 99% of it in their hands with the, you know, condition that's subject to change, I think it's helpful for them to have the ability to review it ahead of time, several days ahead of time.
Thank you. That's good feedback.
Thank you.
And then, just briefly, you received this evening, important dates to remember related to the May election, May 7th, and the town clerk may want to say a few words on that subject. I'm springing this on him, so I'm buying him a couple of seconds here to prepare his thoughts, so...
Mr. Chairman, I would say briefly that the nomination papers for the annual town election on the May 7th are currently available, and the deadline for filing the papers is on March 26th. If there are any questions, contact Kathy Ellsworth, my assistant town clerk, or myself, and would be happy to answer any questions that they might have.
Thank you. Well, this is very helpful. Great. Is this going to be on the town webpage?
I believe it already is.
Fantastic, because I was surprised and heartened to see that... There's a lot of... Obviously, every year, we have six people available, or six slots available in each precinct, but given some people who moved or for other reasons, we have two, four, five, six, seven other positions in various precincts open. So, it's not just six, it could be seven or eight. Encourage people to do so.
And I... Mr. Chairman, I can further comment on last evening. I had the pleasure of swearing in four temporary town meeting members who were caucused in prior to the meeting. It was... Our office felt it was important to try to fill out the membership as best we can leading into the election season, but all four of them are well aware that they will have to run on their own and take up nomination papers for the upcoming May election.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Town Manager?
That's all. Thank you.
Then, the board will consider a consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And then, the correspondent, selectmen's new business, previous new business updates, selections closing comments. Mr. Clark.
Sir.
Mr. Chairman, I hope I haven't repeated myself from the previous meeting. Did I mention Bob Zipco at our last meeting? I don't believe I did. I think he passed away after that. Okay. We lost a long-term teacher in the Danvers public school system, a man who was dedicated to his craft. He was a very, very talented individual, as well as a very good teacher with a lot of special young men and a few women in his class. Bob Zipco, for years, taught the woodworking classes at Danvers High School, and I know back in the early 80s, when I was principal of the night school, he had the most popular class. We had to run two sections of the class that year, and they were all filled up. Bob made some very, very nice things, tables, et cetera, for the town over the years with his craftsmanship, but he took a special... He had a special attraction with a lot of the boys especially. I'd say the ones who have high activity and sometimes low interest. Mike Gagen, who's his successor, kind of, he and I used to call them the hook-and-ladder boys. They went to woodshop, they went to TV production, they went to English, and they went out to a job early afternoon after school. But a lot of these kids have made very, very good successes of themselves in life, and a lot of them still talk about them buying a box of cigars for Zipco and taking him over to Century House for dinner. And it's a good reflection on the kind of guy that he was. He was a great guy, and I enjoyed having a lot of coffees with Bob down in the janitor's room over the years, and we're gonna miss him big time.
Thank you. Any other dates or comments?
That's it.
Thank you. Selectman Mills.
Bob Zipco, he also invited older retired people into a woodworking thing. My father had more fun with Bob building things and built the ugliest record cabinet I ever saw in my father's living room, of course, long after he passed, so he was extremely fond of Bob. I also wanted to mention the senior dinner. Any senior, you don't have to be a senior, anybody who'd like to come to the dinner at the Senior Center next Monday, the 11th. If it's your first dinner, I'll buy your ticket. The food is usually very, very good. John Cohane and Pam do the cooking, and they do a wonderful job. And we have a distinguished speaker next Monday night. Steve is going to come and just tell us a story of being town manager for the first contract time. And the other thing that Dan always mentions, the veterans when we close, and I always am so respectful of that. And this week, I would like to just ask people to remember that this country has several thousand federal judges and federal employees in the judicial system who by and large are overworked, terribly, terribly discouraged at the amount of work that is thrown at them. So much of it is silly, useless, and it's just thrown in to make noise, but nevertheless, they have to attend to it. And it's not just the judges. I have a former law clerk who came from BU Law School. He was wonderful. He and his wife and baby now live in Washington, DC. He's still trying to pay his tuition loans after seven or eight years. He works for the Justice Department in the tax litigation, going after cheats and frauds. And it's people like him that so let me know that our government can and will work, and they're wonderful people who are never, never acknowledged for everything they're doing. So, the next time you hear a lawyer joke, you can laugh, but if you hear a judge joke, don't laugh so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Mills.
Just a few things. First off, I want to thank Steve and everybody at Town Hall for, obviously, all the time that was put into educating town meeting members. It's... I think we've really started to master that education is the best way to deal with them. And so, I was thrilled last night, as I walked around, asked people if they had any questions, that they said, "No, I've got this, I've seen it, I've got it." So, I was... I hope that we continue to work that way. I really do like it when people vote and know what they're voting on, whether they agree or disagree, so I like that. Steve, you mentioned dates for the Warren article. Are you talking like in February or March?
Generally, it's April.
Okay. So, just as soon as you have any idea, just a quick...
We'll have an email out this week with some proposed dates.
That'd be great. Even if it's, you're not sure, just let us block it off. I'd really appreciate that. And then, again, tonight, you know, listening to the comments about the Senior Center, you know, this is how many water-type breaks have we had in there in the last several years? Real problem. You know, here we have, we finished the schools, and we have some public buildings that we need to get on the radar ASAP before we have to go back to the schools. Closing out the Senior Center might not sound like that big a deal, but when it's for those that have memory problems and, or, you know, any type of dementia or Alzheimer's, that program is the one that I hear the most about from caregivers. It gives them a break, and having... Causing confusion amongst those people is a very dangerous thing, and so, you know, I know that in our next plan, here, we just finished, what did I say? It was 30-something years of doing schools. We now need to come up with the next plan about addressing our public buildings. We've pushed the DPW off, and I keep hearing about the Senior Center now. I mean, we've been lucky that it hasn't hurt anybody in there, you know, a slippery floor or something like that. So, I just hope as we move into the budget that this becomes something that we do start to discuss, and as we did the school program, we need to do this with our other public buildings, and we need a timeframe on those also. So, thank you.
Thank you. Under my comments, first, I want to thank the town meeting members of the town for coming out on a special town meeting. I know they take their duty and responsibility to heart. I want to thank those who joined us and voted their conscience, whichever direction they went. And yes, I agree with Selectman Reynolds that the amount of education is the key to providing all the town meeting members with all of the answers that they need to move forward. If someone didn't avail themselves of all those opportunities, that's on them. We spent a tremendous amount of time trying to make sure everybody had an opportunity to ask their questions in private or public and got the answers to those questions. I was gonna say, what they like, they may not have liked the answers, but they got the answers. So, I want to thank the town meeting members for their dedication. A couple of the members of the board are also members of the Davis Kiwanis, a social and civic organization. Some of the activities we do are... We have night meetings, and we do a civic project every night meeting. And recently, we did one, and I delivered some care packages up to Beverly Hospital to the Pediatrics Unit, bags with games and toys and things to keep the children occupied, you know, just lighten their load a little bit. The desk nurse, who was in charge, thanked us profusely, but also suggested if we had the opportunity, one of the things they're particularly looking for is CDs.
Use what, please?
CDs. DVDs, I'm sorry, DVDs, movies. They have DVD players in the rooms, but as you can imagine, the DVDs they have just get used over and over and over again. So, if anybody is out there and their children are past the age of their Disney DVDs, instead of tossing them, please consider giving them to the Kiwanis in town, and we can facilitate that, and let me know. Or just drop them off at Beverly Hospital at the front desk, and they'll run them up to the Pediatrics Unit. They're looking for anything from juveniles to early teens. So, the Harry Potters, the Choler May Aboutgrown, or some of the, you know, the Hunger Games, all those kind of things, or all the Disney want-type DVDs. They'd be appreciative of any donations you've given that direction. That's a specific need they have and would appreciate support. That's the Pediatrics Unit, 5th floor of Beverly Hospital. I'll also be recommending it to the Kiwanis for one of our future events. With that, I am all done. I don't have any other past business, so I will turn it over to Selectman Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did suggest that I would update the board on the local climate summit that I attended on January 12th, hosted by the Mac Sierra Club. The session lasted in excess of three and a half hours, and certainly, there was a lot of information presented to the group. Some facts, given that greenhouse emission is a serious concern, which is 43% to 45% caused by traffic emissions. Gas leaks cause an increase in methane being released into the atmosphere. This was not part of the presentation, but there were 106 reported gas leaks in Danvers in 2017. I will say that there were 45 that have been repaired since 2014, but at that point, there's still 106 gas leaks in town. And the future effect of climate change in our community is unknown, but I want to bring this information to the board in the form of questions for future discussion rather than immediate... discussion, rather than me dispense with the information I received. So, my 11 questions are, are we a green community? What is a green community? Should we have a clean energy and climate plan? Are we upgrading to energy-efficient systems? Do we have a plan? Are we creating electricity from renewable sources or just oil and nuclear? Are we upgrading our streetlights to LEDs? What can be done to repair the 106 gas leaks? Are we encouraging electric vehicle adoption? Should we support an emissible vulnerability preparedness? Should we support the International Energy Conservation Code for new buildings? And should we have a sustainable management committee in the community? So, I'd like to ask the board if you agree to have the town manager to look into these 11 questions and report back to us at a later date.
Is everybody...
I'm in total agreement with this. I think we've been behind the eight ball with a lot of environmental processes and haven't taken initiatives that we should have. I've been trying to get us to do solar energy in this town at a transfer station in the form of dump site for a long time. It's a prime site for it, and I think there's a lot of good that could come of it. I just think we ought to look into these issues. That and water are two big issues for us in the future in this town.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to actually extend one and add another question, which...
Sure.
Recently, I've been at a couple of events with the mayor of Beverly, and if you're unaware, the mayor and the city of Beverly are very, very attuned to becoming a green community. They're working for a neutral footprint, are working very hard on it, and they have staff on payroll who, part of their job is dedicated to becoming green. So, I'm wondering if I can add to your question list, ask the town manager to consider defining some, you know, a role that includes specifically moving towards green and environmental-friendly review of projects and potential, you know, proposals, but as you said, for example, with the streetlights, or with other projects that come forward, this person might be advised or might be consulted to just say, "Hey, you know, if you do this, this would help us out," and weigh those factors. So, maybe it should be a, I don't want to say a standalone role, but at least a duty of someone in one of the departments to specifically review and look at green opportunities.
Certainly, and there are a number of green communities in the state already, and a green community designation is a, demonstrates a municipality's commitment to green efforts at the local level and lets the city of town get help for energy efficiency and renewable energy initiatives in the state. A green community aims to decrease the energy use by 20% over the course of five years. I'm sure that's what Beverly is working towards. And my 11th question was, should we have a sustainable management committee, which all that works into that? And that's something that some communities are going to. The community, Danvers may adopt a different model, but we need to have somebody with the eyes and ears on the issue of improving our energy and reducing our emissions, greenhouse emissions. So, Steve has already received a copy of this, and we'll put the ball into his court.
Yeah, we can have a, we do have four staff, off the top of my head, that have parts of their job duties are sustainability and energy efficiency and things like that, so we've, and some of those items, we're nearly finished with, but I'd be happy to provide...
Right, I know some of these we've been working on, but bringing it all up.
No, I think it's a good, it's a good exercise for staff to take a step back and think about these questions, because in one part, it provides some direction, in another part, it provides an opportunity to sort of articulate what we've already accomplished, but I think there's a lot of room for improvement to the points that several of you have made. But we do have a pretty good framework in place, and we can have for the 19th, a full report on those questions.
Oh, great, okay, thank you.
Great. And I guess one of the things I'd look forward to, because I know that members of the audience do regularly ask about, is there any opportunity at the landfill? Solar, wind, methane? I know some of the answers have come forward before, and...
So, one of the positions, we have an energy efficiency and sustainability position in the Electric Department that was vacant for a number of months. We had an employee move on to take a new opportunity. We hired somebody in a couple of months ago who came to us from Salem, who's been an excellent fit. His name is Jeff Alley, and at some, David Lane and I were talking, at some point this spring, we'll have a report just on what that process looks like, because it is, it is an involved process, but it is a priority. So, we'll be able to, we'll be able to have a conversation with the board about what that, what that process looks like, what the milestones are, what the potential obstacles may be in terms of permitting, but that's a process he's working on as we speak.
Great, thank you.
All right, good, thank you. So, the last thing would be for, if you see a vet, thank them for their service, current and retired veterans all over. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to Dana, motion adjourned. Motion made in second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you very much. Good night, Danvers.